This is somewhat of an informal situation today, a little bit different than we've ever done before. We'll call the meeting to order. Trent is just going to take the role here. We have Supervisor Zerflue is excused and Supervisors Hamilton and Bry are on virtually, I understand. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? All right, seeing none at this time, I will turn it over to Mike Fire. Michael, what is yours, sir?
Thanks Lance. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. We decided from the public safety end of it is to get everybody here and here firsthand so they don't have to come and present it three, four other times. If everybody gets the same information, we can decide and figure out how we want to do it. So at this time, I'll turn it over to the sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it. Well, good morning. Thank you all for being here and coming in to talk about the Waukami Jail and the jail study. Let me introduce some of our team here from administration. Lee Crackers Officer James Lerner, Captain Ted Ashbeck, he runs their jail, Lieutenant Elizabeth Sager, also in the jail, Operations Captain, what else? And I usually call him the Chief Deputy, but he's the Chief Deputy because he runs our budget and he does an awesome job with it. There you go first. So again, thank you all for being here. Got a couple of words I just want to bring up. Eighteen years ago, the county board voted on building a new jail, but they decided not to fund it at that time. So now we're here again, addressing the issue again. Obviously, the jail's eighteen years older. There's some maintenance issues, some concerns there that we're dealing with. Our inmate population has gone up quite a bit. In fact, before the pandemic started, we're at the most inmates that we've ever had in the county. In fact, we're to start to house more inmates out of county, which is a significant cost which we'll talk about here in the future, or in a few minutes. But I want to make it very clear, I'm not, or we're not here as a team to sell you a new jail. We're here to provide you the information. The information that you can move forward and make a decision in what direction we should go. Once I took office, we sat down as a team and decided what priorities and what things we're going to move towards. And the jail's a huge priority. So again, that's why we're here today. This is so important to us, you know, to have this direction coming from you and what we need to do. We were going to remodel the front part of the Sheriff's Department, the office area, and we felt it was very important to move that project off to fund the jail study. So that's why we're here. I want to introduce John Kane, VP of Venture Architects. He's done the jail study. It's been a pleasure working with him. He's spent lots of times with myself, obviously with Ted, this past several months. So once the presentation is done, if you have any questions, please ask us. You know, I'll answer a question. Ted will, or anybody here from the administration team can answer a question for you. All right, so as we move forward, John Kane, thanks for coming.
Morning, everyone. Before I start, I also want to introduce Kurt Burner. Kurt, stand up, please.
Morning, everyone.
He's with the Samuels Group. They're a construction manager, general contractor up out of LaSalle. And I would say of all the many firms, contractors and architects that do this kind of work, we're probably number one in the state in that regard of the planning and design of facilities like this. And clearly, Samuels Group is the number one CM contractor, having done projects throughout the state as well. And in fact, we're now working together on a new justice center for Trumplow County that just actually kicked off yesterday. Before I start into the discussions, I also want to mention that, well, first of all, thank you very much for inviting us back. There are a lot of familiar faces in this room. You know that a number of years ago, our firm, and I guess I did most of the work, did your facility master plan that looked at all the departments here, but with the exception of the sheriff, the jail, and the sheriff's offices. And at the time, there was kind of this sense, Don and I were talking about it a minute ago, well, why didn't we talk about that? And he said, well, there was this feeling at the time, maybe it was a different sheriff, perhaps. He said, no, just don't, let's not talk about that. I mean, there are enough beds in Wapaka that will last us a lifetime and we just don't really need to work on it. But there is so definitely a lot of history that I personally have with all of you and the facilities that you have here that I think helps us out. The other thing that I want to mention just briefly, that not only have we worked with all of the sheriff's staff, very early on in the project, I came up here for two days and sat down and talked with practically anybody in the county who had some involvement and relationship with the jail. State officials, judges, district attorney, some of the local chiefs of police, probation and parole, a lot of departments, human services, health department, all of those people, all those department heads came and we talked about this project. And without stuffing the ballot, if you will, there was a unanimous sense from everybody I talked to that the county really needed to address its jailed issues. And we'll get into the reasons for that here in just a minute. You have in front of you the handout, and we're just going to go through it page by page. There are page numbers in the upper right-hand corner so that particularly when we go back into questions and answers, if you can make reference to the page that you might be looking at, that we can then go back through the slides and find that page. So we're all, as they say, on the same page. So I think, why don't we just get started? As I said to the sheriff, if, as I'm going through this, it's going to take a little bit of time, so please be patient. If there's a question of information, or there's a need for a clarification on something that I have, without getting into a long discussion, I think we're open to that question if it can just be a yes or no, or something like that. So you see in front of you the outline, there are nine things that we're going to talk about. I won't read them here, we'll just end up going through them, but I do want to point out that at the very end, we are going to spend some time under nine, talking about the existing facility and the stay as is. In other words, if nothing ever were to happen, we're going to talk in actually great detail about that, because I think that is clearly one of the options that the county has before you. So very quickly, in summary, as I mentioned a moment ago, we had done the campus master plan study, got a lot of background there. So as the sheriff approached us and said, well, we need to fill in that gap, what we chose to do was really address three topics. The assessment of the jail and the sheriff's facility, both from a physical as well as an operational basis. We developed a space program to meet those needs. And then, as you'll see this morning, we've developed a number of options, physical options to address those space need requirements. The process that we typically go through on projects like this, it's a five-step process. You'll see shaded one, two, and three really represents the work that we've been doing with you, considering this being the study. Phase one is the facility assessment, as I mentioned, both operational and physical. Phase two is the, or step two is the space program, step three is the master plan. Should the project go forward, we hope it will, of course, that then the final steps are design and construction, and that would be future phases. So very, very briefly, and as an executive summary, let me explain what our recommendation is, that the county continues the process of replacing the existing jail and sheriff's facility. Keep moving in planning for that facility. And as I'll explain here in a minute, that representation, or that recommendation, rather, falls into three major categories: operational, physical, and economical. And you see some little pictures here at the bottom that illustrate each of those. So from a operational perspective, there are what we believe six overarching issues that are being affected by the current condition of the jail. First and foremost, of course, is jail overcrowding. And what, and that may seem simply a financial aspect, but of course, when you have inmates that move, that are in another county, all the opportunities for programming and rehabilitation simply eliminate because they don't get those services if they're not in the county. We will talk about problems with safety and security in the building because of just the design of the facility. It's a linear jail. We'll talk a lot about what a linear jail is, and you'll see those pictures this morning. You simply can't see what's going on. Jail functions, which means that there's simply not enough space in the building for many of the essential programming services that a facility like this needs, from booking to exercise, et cetera. We'll talk this morning about classification. The state has mandates and requirements of how you separate men and women, and minimum, medium, and maximum. The current jail is inadequate in meeting those needs. We talked about something called special needs beds. These are people who just simply can't work, can't live hospitably, if you will, with general population. They need to be separated out so that they can be managed, and there are literally no beds in that regard in the current facility. And then the last one, COVID-19, which I think honestly, we don't really talk enough about, and we may have that conversation this morning, it really has an impact on the physical design and operation of a facility. And that applies to the safety of not only your inmates, but also your staff as well. So without further ado, let me just keep going here. So that was operational. This is physical. We'll talk a lot this morning about the conditions of the building, what we call MEP, or mechanical electrical plumbing. Everything essentially is original to the 1988 building and pretty much needs to be replaced. Some of you are familiar with the problems with the cast iron sewer line and the work that had to be done in the kitchen a few years back. We think there may be another issue in that regard. And then, similar to all of the other systems in the building, security needs to upgrade and is currently out of date. From an economical point of view, the task here simply is, is that over the last 10 years, you've spent over $11 million renting beds from primarily Wapaka, but then more recently Adams County. And to note, in 2019, it was nearly $1 million, $985,000. And we'll talk about the fact that should the existing jail continue as is, there's going to be a lot of ongoing maintenance and expenses and upgrades, and we'll go into great detail about that here this morning. So going on to chapter two, if you will, let's talk a little bit about the jail. And, you know, I certainly encourage all of you at some time, and I think the sheriff will support this when I say that, to be properly informed on this topic, you really need to tour the jail and understand and see firsthand the things that we'll be talking about here. To believe only on what the pictures are, I don't think is enough to do proper due diligence in that regard. You need to go there, see it, talk to the jail administrator, et cetera, about these issues. But, okay, John, let's keep going here. We'll be here all morning. The description of the jail, it's actually two parts. There was the original 1956 jail that I'll outline here in a minute on a slide, and then the 1988 actually wrapped around it. So it's kind of a contrived design, if you will. The site was very tight when the 88 building was built. Jail's mostly on a single level. The jail has a capacity, we'll talk about that, is of 132 beds. That's the rated capacity, that's defined by the state. I do want to make one correction on this slide where you see 106. If you have in your notes, if you have a pen, write 112, if you would, please. And that would be actually 85% of rated capacity. There's going to be another slide later on that will say 85, and I want to make sure that both of those are the same. And then finally, in this brief description, I want you to understand that of those 132 beds, 30% of them are in a cell design. Bars is enclosed, it's a cell, but 70% of them are in a dormitory construction, and you'll see some pictures of that. And that's an important note to recognize, that 30 cell and 70 dorm, because that affects classification. So a few more brief descriptions of the building itself. I'm on slide 12. You can see there's a legend on the left, so you can see for yourselves where the colors are, the parking to the north and the south, the courthouse color, the sheriff's department, which is the yellow, and then the jail is the purple color. And of course, we are in the orange building on the third floor. And then, of course, to the south is the storage annex. This next slide here goes into more detail about the different elements within the jail. Just very briefly, the salmon color represents all of the housing, and I'll have another slide to describe that in a minute. And then, all of the other support functions that are part of the jail are all the other colors that you see, the pink and the rose and the green, et cetera. That's all the program space that's in the building. Let me also note that that yellow box that bump out, that sticks out, that's going to be the garage or the Sally Port. That's where the vehicle, the arresting officer drives into this garage to drop off the prisoner and take them into the jail. We'll talk about that here in a minute, but that's going to be the Sally Port and all the booking area. The whole yellow is the booking at Sally Port. So as I noted a moment ago, and a lot of this simply is for future reference, this is how the beds are organized in the current jail. As I noted, the cells represent 30%, and the dorm represents 70%. And you'll see that the sheriff and the staff have identified various blocks by letter designation, and so we've simply illustrated that in this particular picture. Am I going too fast or too slow? Are we going just right? State of Wisconsin has something called the Department of Corrections, Chapter 350. So it's a, I don't know, 30-page document, something like that. About 95% of it is about jail operations, the things that the sheriff and the jail administrator have to do in terms of maintaining a safe and secure facility. But there is a section that talks about physical design, or physical conditions, if you will. And in that portion of 350, there are three subcategories, or three subchapters, and I've listed them here, .05, .06, and .07. And you'll see after the dash line, they relate to when a project was built. So that you'll see here, for example, in a minute, the building that we're talking about, built in 1988, the DOC chapter, they've now put that within the subchapter .07. If a new building were built, we will be dealing in .05. And so let's talk about that a little bit. So certainly, with no criticism of the county or the architect at the time, looking at chapter .07, the jail meets those requirements, minimal that they were, but it does meet those requirements. And so in that regard, you're grandfathered. You don't have to make any changes because you were built underneath, under that code. But if we take a look at how the current jail prepares to the present code, if you will, it's lacking in many ways, and so I've simply outlined these very briefly. Starts with the cells. They really aren't adequate in size if they were to be built now. The daily spaces, which are the areas where a lot of the activity takes place, are likewise undersized. The recreation and programming spaces are incredibly inadequate in the present jail, and we'll talk more about that in our evaluation, but it does not meet the current code. Suicide prevention, which simply talks in a general sense about how you maintain safety and security in the jail. It would not meet the requirements. The jail, the regional jail inspector, if we were designing a new jail to match what you currently have, they would not approve its design, simply would not approve it. And then, this issue of classification that I've mentioned a number of times, where the state established these clearly got, clear guidelines about separation of male and female, minimum, medium, maximum, it would not meet the requirements of the current .05. So then, let's get into that evaluation. In an overview, and actually, I probably included this in the executive summary, so I won't repeat myself, but there are these five major areas that we're going to talk about: security, operations, classification, programming, as well as special needs beds. We've taken this floor plan that you saw a minute ago, and we've identified on it 19 things that we believe are worth discussing. Now, you'll see some little stars after, what, five of them, maybe eight, 15 through 18? We will not go in any detail related to those, but all the other ones, we're going to talk here in a minute and a second about what that means. And so I'll go through each one of them. This is where it kind of bogs down. We're into the weeds now, so I want to be sure I keep things moving along. So we talked about the Sally Port. I noted that on the plan before. You can read as easily as I can what some of the things are, so I won't go into a reading session about that. But you'll see some of the issues in terms of its size, height of the garage door, a whole sorts of issues that exist in the Sally Port. The booking area, which is directly into the building from the Sally Port, I think the things that I would point out here, and you can, at your leisure, read these things, it's simply not adequate in size. There is something that is lacking in the jail, it's called a pre-booking area, that happens to be the first item that I noted, that when an arresting officer comes to a facility like that, the county, there's a point in that handoff, if you will, that the sheriff and their staff have to accept that prisoner. And at that point, you take the liability of having received that prisoner into your jail. So the process right now happens out in the Sally Port, and that really doesn't work quite well. You really have what we call a pre-booking area, where you take the prisoner out of the car, out of the Sally Port, into a relatively small area, maybe you do a breathalyzer, you do a medical exam, you determine whether or not at that point you want to receive the prisoner into the jail. You follow what I'm saying? This facility, like many facilities of its era, did not have a pre-booking area. So that's a real hindrance, if you will, to the operations of the jail. So that's booking. Classification, I think I've mentioned this a number of different ways this morning. The relative limited number of cells, mostly dormitory, really limits that ability. You have a little picture of one of those. The linear jail design, maybe I didn't explain so clearly, but when you saw that plan, there's just this long hallway, and everything's kind of off of it. You literally can't see much of anything in that hallway, as I'll show you with some pictures. And that's a real challenge with regards to safety and security, et cetera. So that's really what we're talking about when we talk about the linear jail design. Huber, or the work release inmates, these are people who are out in the community. They come and go, and God bless them that they have that chance and they have a job. But there's also the fact that when they come into the jail, they can have stuff in their pockets, they can have stuff in a lot of places. And we're, in this present design, there's really not the physical configuration to be able to manage and control the potential for contraband coming into the building. A proper facility like this would actually have different sets of lockers. They'd have the lockers where their street clothes were, take off their clothes, they'd be screened, and then they come into the jail and they put on their jail uniform. That all happens in one room right now, so you can imagine the potential for stuff to come in. So that's that. Master control, which is the heart of the jail, in itself, its layout is fine to what it has to do, but it has a lot of other functions, not only within the jail, but it also has to manage the lobby space. And just simply the way that the master control is laid out, for somebody to observe the lobby, they actually have to get up from their chair unless they're looking at the cameras. They have to get up and walk to the back of the master control, around the bathroom, and see what's going on in the lobby. May not be a big deal, if you will, but it could certainly, in a new facility, be eliminated, that problem. Programming. In those conversations that we had with all the various people in the community, one of the things that really came out was that you have organizations, churches perhaps, nonprofits, who really want to bring programming to your facility, but there's no place that they can run the programs. You have essentially one room that's dedicated in the plan, and that room not only provides programming, but it's the law library, it's a whole variety of other things that are really limiting your ability as a county to provide essential programming and rehabilitation, if you will, services to the offenders that are in the jail. And so maybe it's something of a philosophical issue as to to what degree you want and feel you need to do that, but you want, certainly want to keep in mind that most of the people who come to jail come back to the community, and they're not necessarily going to, going to the state prison system. So at what point do you help to bring some programming functions and activities into their lives? Simply stated, there's not enough room in this jail for that to happen. Medical, maybe not a real big issue, but the area for the nurse, et cetera, is really quite small. It meets the state's requirements, but from a functioning point of view, it's rather small. You have a mental health contract. The coordinator does have an office. Ideally, it would be closer to medical. Again, maybe not a big issue, but in a different configuration, that might be more desirable. Food service. I think the challenge about food service is that because of its design, and there's this picture on the left side, I'm on slide 32, there's a door that goes from the kitchen right out, essentially out to the lobby, does it not? That's one door, and your prisoners are on their way. So what it means is that you can't have inmates working in the kitchen. And so, you know, maybe there's a cost benefit if you could do that. Certainly, there's an opportunity for vocational education, so to speak, for those prisoners, but that's a little bit of a small challenge, if you will. Is that right, guys?
Yeah.
So there are other things that are related to food service, storage, et cetera. Likewise laundry, small in size, we're dealing primarily with residential furnishings and fixtures. The staff area, you'll see this on your tour, literally, the staff for the jail are in that room that you see in the picture. You've got five different people, five different divisions, so to speak, working out of that one room. It works, but not desirable. And then visiting, there are two contact professional visiting rooms that are right next to the master control. They themselves are fine, but because, again, the limited amount of opportunity for programming, that those rooms also get used for programming, that then likewise eliminates its use for what it's meant to be. And then you have six non-contact booths, pretty much for this population, not enough. Ligature. What is ligature? Donna, what's ligature? You can tie something off, I think is the definition. So I think the sheriff and their staff have done a marvelous job of trying to eliminate the potential for ligature throughout the facility, but there are still some areas, you know, where there are bars, if you will, that's an easy one. I think some of your areas, you put plastic over that, but something to keep in mind. The physical condition, I'm going to go through this real fast because we're going to get into some details here in a minute. I mentioned before simply the existing of all the systems. All of them are pretty much original to 1988. Many of you have been around here in recent years, you know there was an issue in the kitchen. The sewer line backed up, had to dig up the floor, had to tear out the floor, and that's the picture in the middle. We have another cast iron line that runs all through the length of the entire building. There's some concern about its livelihood, so to speak. Then I've mentioned already about the security systems. So again, I'm not going to go in great detail through these, but I think you can see for each of the topics, there are a lot of issues that want and really need to be considered. And, you know, it's not a criticism of anybody here in the room, it's simply the fact that as a car, or a house, or anything else, you know, the roof needs to be replaced. Or like in my house, our air conditioner went out two months ago. So it's not my fault, it's not the house's fault, it's just that it needs to be replaced. And so I think that's kind of what, and we are getting a new air conditioner, so you don't have to smile, laugh, come on. Thank God it's, yeah, you don't feel sorry for me.
No, I don't.
I know you don't. There's some electrical issues. Again, I don't want to get into the details with this. Plumbing, fire protection, some issues there, mostly related to the condition of the systems. Security is an issue, I've mentioned that already, I won't go into detail about that. I'm going to touch just briefly on jail populations. There are a number of charts I want to share with you. Let's go through these real fast. What drives the jail population? It's kind of like a hotel. You know, how many people are staying at your hotel? Well, it's based upon how many people check into your hotel and how long they stay. So it's both admissions and length of stay. So if you look at these charts, the first one, the blue lines, it's kind of a straight line. These would be your These would be your bookings and admissions per year, let's say, what, over the last 10 years. It's pretty much, pretty consistent, constantly, if you will. But then when you look at the length of stay, you'll see that from 2016 to 2019, there's been a pretty serious spike. Meaning people are staying in the jail longer, which means you have the need for more beds, which drives the people that you can't house and you're sending them more to Wapaka or to Adams. And there are a lot of different reasons. And maybe in the Q and A, the sheriff can get into some of the reasons as to why that spike has taken place. But so then likewise, it would then, without, without a lot of discussion, turn into this particular slide that shows that, you know, from 2003 to 2015, you know, again, it was pretty flat, but here in the last three years, it's really peaked. It's climbed. So lots of different reasons for that. And so, as I noted earlier, and there's some lines that go through the bars, the rated capacity is 132, the design capacity is 112. So in an ideal operational world, that 112, that should be the bed population in the jail, to maintain classification, et cetera. But you can see, literally, from 2003 on, you've been over that line and over that line to a great extent. So what, how have you addressed that? You've really addressed it in two different ways. So you can see the darker green is in custody, and it tends to follow the line of design capacity, the 112. But then you've got a big aqua, what color is that, green? That we call out of custody. Those are your bed rentals in Wapaka and Adams. And then on top of that, the blue is your electronic monitoring. And every county does electronic monitoring, because not everybody really should be in jail. There are bracelet programs, there are diversions to having people in jail. The turquoise, that's a good thing. It drives down the population. But the green, that's a bad thing, because you're paying money for that. So you'll see, you know, electronic monitoring has been up recently, again, because of the number of prisoners. And here's where we start to talk about money. Because here's where you start to pay Wapaka and Adams. And again, up until 2018, the number of beds that you're renting out, roughly around 75. But in 2019, it spiked up to 99. And how does that translate into dollars and cents? You'll see this slide 50, pretty much the same all the way across. About a million dollars a year in actual, what should I say? You're writing checks to Wapaka and Adams for a million bucks. But as we'll talk later on in the presentation, there are other costs associated with having to rent beds. You have staffing costs, you have time away from other tasks, et cetera. So out of all of that, and talking with the sheriff's staff, and looking at different ways of addressing future bed needs, and looking at what we say might be a 20-year projection, we're recommending that any future planning for a facility, use a number of roughly 300 beds as a benchmark, a place to begin that discussion. It's more than what you currently have, it's more than what you currently need right now. But a facility like this, just like, think of the number of years, 1988 to now. How many years was that? 30 years? So, my gosh. So this thing, in a similar conversation, this 300 beds needs to meet your needs for 20 years at least, one would hope. So you're planning for the future, just as your county did in 1988. What that then did, in meeting with the sheriff and their staff, translated into a space program. So you'll see on slide 53, a facility of roughly 150,000 square feet. Roughly 120 is jail, roughly 35 is the sheriff's department. And these are all the different things that go into that design. So a little discussion about what that design might look like, we call that new facility. This is your current jail. This is what you see when you come into the jail. It's, how long is that hallway? 100 yards, 300 feet, football field. That's what your sheriff's staff, your jail staff see when they come to work and they look down that hallway. They can't see a thing. And that's what we call a linear jail design. For them to see the offenders, they actually have to go up to the door. It's a little window thing, and that really doesn't get you much. You almost literally have to go into each of the units to see what's going on. Now, you say, well, can't we cover that with cameras? Yes, you do. You have lots and lots of cameras throughout the facility. What might a new jail look like? What, we use a term called podular. This is slide 56. This actually happens to be a computer-generated model of a design that we're working together on in Iowa. It's called Dallas County, and it's pretty much complete now. So the elements that you see, and I'll show you actual photograph of another project in a minute. In the middle, there's an officer station. And from that point, they can see 360 degrees. So what do they then see? You'll see the cells around the perimeter. And then the officer can see directly into the day rooms and then the cell areas. So here happens to be a sample of that, this being Eau Claire County. So here's the officer. So try to, so kind of go from that, I'm up on the screen, page 55, to that. That's what we're talking about in terms of a new design. Okay, now I'm going to really bore you, I'm sorry. Reading floor plans. To help put a budget together for the project, we had to put something of a design together. And so what we're talking about is, if I, if I take that diagram as, and I call that a pod, roughly 100 beds, let's just use that as a benchmark. What we're talking about is a three-pod design. And that's the picture that you see on slide 58. The purple are the cells. The piece in the middle is the officer station. The beige color actually is some dayroom spaces or dorm, dormitory construction. We call it Pod A, Pod B, and Pod C. Again, this is to help to put a budget number together and then understand classification. I should mention, when we talked before about the percentage of dorm to cell, and the dorms were 70, and the cells were 30. In this design, it's more 55 dorm and 35, 45 cell. That makes 100, yeah. So we still have a lot of dormitory construction. Dormitories are less expensive to build than cells. And the type of inmates that you have in the facility don't all have to be in a cell. Many of them can be in a dorm. But in a new design, we can create smaller dorms than what you have now. And then with the ability to see into them better than what you've got right now, I think we can still have a high percentage of dorms, just not as high a percentage as you have right now, to still meet classification. So, yes, Donna?
So the standard is 100 beds per pod?
Well, I'm going to show you, I'll deviate from that right now. Okay. So here's Pod A, or what my associate, who's from the military, would refer to as Pod Alpha. I'm on slide 59, that's 120 beds. That was 120. Pod Bravo was 120. That's the next slide, that's 60. So you see like half of its cells and half of its dorm construction. But then where the difference is in this Pod C, what we call Pod Charlie, where we end up, we'll end up with all, mostly all single cells. So I don't want to get into all, really too deep into the weeds, but the state allows us by building cells of a certain size that we can have two inmates in that cell. And so again, based on classification, a lot of the facility can be doubled, so to speak, that the cell can actually have two people in it. But then we have what we call maximum, or special needs beds, that I mentioned before. Those would all be single cells. And all of this is in an effort to match the current population that the jail has in terms of what we call minimum, medium, maximum, and special needs. So.
So just make sure I understand this. The dorms can actually go anywhere from six beds per, no, two beds per cell to five beds per cell? What is the?
What slider do you want?
Oh, 60.
Okay. Let's start to the left and work our way around. So you'll see there's three areas that are kind of cut off, there's diagonal lines. Each one of those is a subunit, so, if you will. The building is a two-design, so you have four cells on the first floor. They're doubled to eight. And then you have another level above that, another four cells with eight beds. And so I worked my way around. So on the left-hand side, you've got three units. I add them, do the math. One has eight beds, one has six, one has cells, rather, eight, six, and six. Then I go up to the top, and I apologize that my associate actually cut off a line of text. So where it says five cells, 10 beds, do you see that at the very top? Take that same line and draw it up on the top again. So they're actually, do you follow what I'm trying to say? Yeah, it got cut off. So there's five down, five up, five down, five up. And then we go over to the right-hand side, and these are the dorms. So you have 10 beds on the main floor, you have 10 beds on the upper floor. So then you do the math, there's 40 on the left, there's 40 on the top, 40 on the right, and that's the 120. Again, in an effort to both recognize classification as well as to give Kurt a footprint of the pod, because most of the cost is in the housing units. So we want to make sure that we're carrying enough. So how does all this fit on the site and how, what kind of options might we look at? There are going to be essentially three options that we're going to explore with you. The committee did see these the last time we met, like, what, roughly a month ago? So you might recall this particular slide, where, are you able to orient yourself on the slide where the courthouse is? North is up. The salmon color is the courthouse. The yellow in this particular option is going to be the sheriff's office. And we're going to take a portion of the existing jail, and we're going to turn that into the sheriff's office as well. So we're going to be doing a lot of remodeling in that respect. That, if you keep, if you recall back, we're talking about 300 beds. That's our, that's our benchmark, is 300 beds. We're going to build 200 of them in a new design. And that's that long, narrow box that sits on the street. And I'll show you a diagram of what that looks like here in just a minute. So 200 beds are new. And then the remaining 100, we're going to go back into the existing jail, do some remodeling, and turn all of that into dormitory construction. Now, we can't make, we can't hit the 100-bed mark, it's only going to be 80 beds. So this design actually is short of the 300, it's 280. So 200 new beds, 80 remodeled beds. Let me see if this picture helps. So the gray is the courthouse. The new addition is the piece to the right, looks like a circus wagon, all the colors. We kind of took that diagram that you saw before and kind of laid it on top. So the jail is two levels high, the housing portion. And then that green piece on the bottom, that's where the kitchen is, and the booking and all the other jail support functions. So from the main street, it basically is a three-story building, and actually then the height of the courthouse. So if you then follow around in the diagram, you'll see, we go over here, that the other red piece, the long piece, that's the old jail. And that's going to be remodeled into dorm construction. And then the yellow is going to be the sheriff. Now, I don't want to get that far into the details. You know that there's a courtyard that's over here. And you've got to drive down to get to Rubens area. And what we want to do is we want to dig all of that out, and we want to put a building, a one-level building in that, which is at the same, it's like a basement level, if you will. That would be the fleet garage for the sheriff. So that would actually connect us to the courthouse. And that he'd be able to still get down there in the basement, it would not be landlocked. That area, that new construction, will also allow us the ability to get from the jail to the courts in this building. So in that courtyard, if you will, there's going to be a hallway on one end where the inmates can move securely from the jail, not in the garage, but next to the garage, on that lower floor, and then take the elevator here and come up into the courts. We talked back when we did the master plan, the possibility that maybe someday, we'd add more courts to this building. And so those new courts would actually go on top of the garage. Am I, is this making any sense? We would fill the courtyard in with future construction. Not, nothing part of this project, but we're just trying to plan for the future in that regard. So more information than you want to know? No? Okay.
Well, I got a question.
Yes?
But when you're back, go back to the pods. Oh, did they not exist somewhere, still, there was something similar to it? Is that already been built?
Yes.
So we could, we could get, we could get pictures of similar. It might not be exactly what you designed, but.
There's one. There's one, Ken, yeah. Torrey is, I'm trying to think, that was Portage County. Touring is a real important part of this process. And if, I mean, you, certainly with the sheriff's staff, if you want and need to plan on touring facilities, it would be an excellent thing. There's a question in back?
Well, that's page 57, isn't that basically what you're talking about, Paul, on 30?
It's exactly correct, yes.
That, I think, 59. Or I don't, is that 59 or 50?
Well, actually, it would be, it's pretty much the same. But if I were to take literally that slide that you pointed out, that, this being Eau Claire, you can see where the officer is, and they're looking out. Those cells that are right in front of him, in this particular slide, happen to be what I would call general population cells. But again, the project we're doing in Iowa, those are the special needs beds, like right in front of the officer, the suicide beds. And so they can see right into the cell on that, on that lower. Yes?
One more question. On page 64, the gray, is that, would be the west side of the project? And that would be the courthouse? And this is only a question. Why couldn't, because you're talking, that's going to be as high as the courthouse, correct?
Correct.
Why couldn't there be, instead of elevators and everything else from the jail, directly into the court area with a train that goes across?
Bridge?
Yeah.
The walkway?
So you have no interference from any of the public? That would be strictly, catch your train?
I do, right, absolutely. I think it's something that we can look at, certainly, yeah. I mean, yeah, we're into the weeds now. You have, you have this courtroom over here, which could, if we could get to that courtroom from the jail without, I mean, the goal is to keep the prisoners out of the hallway. And we could do that with this courtroom over there. It's the challenge of this one and that one. And then, as you might know, if you've ever been in the clerk of courts area, there's a high ceiling in there, or at least above the ceiling. That's where the fourth courtroom is supposed to go someday. It's actually planned to go there. But we're really into the weeds, aren't we? Planning jails and courthouses. But there was no thought or concern about moving prisoners down the hallway. Times have changed. John, let's keep going here, we've got a lot, still a lot to cover. Okay. So then, option, so option one was 200 beds new, 100 beds remodeled. Option two, we're going to have an A and a B, it's going to be all-new jail. All-new jail, all jail support. So that L shape is the jail, there are going to be three pods, you're going to see that in a minute. The jail support is a floor below that. In this design, with the sheriffs, with the jail having been, the function of the jail... In this design, with the sheriffs, with the jail having been, the function of the jail having been moved to a new building, we're going to take the existing jail, gut it, remodel it into a new sheriff's office. And the sheriff would move completely into that building. And then that would allow where the sheriff currently is, could be space for expansion of other departments in this building. Donna's shaking her head. We've got to look at all the options.
The growth of government.
Pardon?
Growth of government.
Growth of government, yes. So then, here we are. There are the three pods, it starts to impede or impinge on the block, as you can see. And note out probably some land acquisition, property acquisition. So you see the jail, the three pods, and then the sheriff's department is taking the entire existing jail. So that's going to be two A. We're going to talk about two B, which is the same, but in this case, we're tearing the old jail down, and we're going to build a brand-new, we're tearing the old jail down, instead of remodeling it into the sheriff, we're going to build a brand-new sheriff's office. We will, when we talk about budget numbers, in this option two, the numbers we're going to share with you will be strictly for the jail. Um, and we're going to talk about the sheriff's office as being a future phase. So this will be one case, the only case under option two where we actually talk about a phased approach. They think I'm still driving too. I never got there. She's bothering me. Yes?
Can you explain what the white buildings are behind the courthouse?
Houses?
Are those just houses?
They're just, yes.
Okay, so why are they highlighted?
We just wanted to provide some context.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not coming down. We could have gone. We have a young student in, oh, you know, in, in architecture, I don't know, where are we going with this? This stuff, I don't know how to do any of this stuff on the screen. I've got young people who just love doing this, and they could have modeled half of Wisconsin Rapids if I didn't ask them to stop. They love, they just love this. I hope these diagrams are helping you get a sense as to what we're talking about. I mean, these are very conceptual. I think they, they get you moving in a direction, having a conversation. I think the issue really ultimately is going to be the cost of the options, that's where the discussion is going to take place. Um, will the building look like these? I think we have a sense, we know how much space it's going to take. There are lots of different options within these, I don't want to get into the details of that. Uh, we want to, again, keep moving along here. Um, so finally, option three is going to take everything that we've talked about this morning, that meaning the jail and the sheriff and everybody else. They're all going to move out of this current building into a completely brand-new building. So where before we were talking about reusing parts of the existing building for the sheriff or for the jail, in this option, these options only, we're going to build all brand, all brand-new, yes?
Yeah, I had a question, I mean, on options, uh, two, two A and B actually, that's going to require some pretty hefty relocation of the sheriff's department. Have you, have you looked into that while, while the construction's being done? There, I mean, if you're going to gut the place, you're not going to be able to occupy it, and if you're going to tear it down and build a new place, you're not going to be able to occupy it too. So have you figured into your calculations the cost of relocating and continuing operations for as long as a year perhaps?
Um, that's an excellent question. Um, I'm going to try to explain it in the slide that's on the screen. Can you see that, page sixty-eight?
Oh, gosh.
The.
I thought you said you were a little.
No, no, no. Do you see where the, the courthouse is now, the orange? On slide sixty-eight? The, what am I going to call it? The bump-out part of the orange? That's where the sheriff is right now. The sheriff is really not, so the yellow portion, let me go back one, let me go back to this one.
Do you have a pointer up there?
Is there a pointer on this?
No, a little, a little thing, a little red dot.
Here comes our pointer, here comes.
Yeah, pointer would help. Oh, are you going to point?
Not one you probably want to look at, though.
I can point up here.
Well, it's nice to have that little.
Yeah, yeah. You guys are showing interest in this, I can't believe it. This guy. Mind your way.
No.
Okay, um, so the question was asked, if we're going to, so this is where the sheriff is right now. This is all jail. So that, to answer your question, we can come in here, I believe, Kurt. We can come in here and do all the gutting and remodeling that we need to, to move the sheriff from that area into that area. So I think we can deploy.
You just placed the jail.
Pardon?
Then you just placed the jail, so.
Well.
Well, the jail would.
You're saying modelled back there, right?
The jail, the new jail.
Oh, no, you're saying so the new jail for her.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're, yeah. No, no, it's an excellent question. So, so, yeah, so this gets built first. This, no question is, please, ask your questions. This gets built first, this is all jail, and that cleans out this building. So that's phase one. Phase two cleans this out, builds, puts the sheriff in there, and that's really the extent of the project. The space that the sheriff has left, this simply remains as is for whatever future use, but it's not budgeted in, in the numbers that we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on to this.
Sheriff?
That's Brad.
Yeah, uh, I had to work on the number, Rob. I think that was a big, big one, throw, at, on the, on the street there, the sewer and the water.
I think Brett's talking to Ebron. The question, I believe, is that there's, there are utilities in the street? Yes? At, at one point, my understanding was that maybe there was only a water line in the street, but maybe there's more recent knowledge of that. In any case, the numbers that we are going to talk about this morning, there are things that we have not included in the budget numbers because we don't yet have a real handle on them. We don't have a handle on utility relocation, for example. If, in these options, we have to acquire more property, we don't have those numbers into, into these nu- into these budget numbers as well. Um, I think in our efforts, in, in, though that creates kind of an apples-to-apples comparison, I think going forward, there needs to be a clear sense as to where the county wants to go in, in this approach. It has not only capital costs, but their operating costs that we haven't even gotten into yet. Um, and then I think there's just more research that needs to happen to fully vet out these other costs. But I, but I'm on slide sixty-five, and I know we have a hundred and five slides here, so, um, I'm going to kind of motor along.
Thank you.
Thank you, you don't, if you don't mind. So, we then talked about the three A option, three A and three B being, everything is in the new building. The three pods, the sheriff's office, and then all of the jail-related functions. And so that's what they would look like. And so then we're moving completely out of the existing building. There is a three A, and there's a three B. Slide seventy-three shows, you know, this particular view leaving the existing building all gray. Now, keep in mind, in this case, the sheriff space, existing sheriff space and existing jail are vacated, they're sitting there empty. They could be remodeled into something else. There are a lot of issues in the existing jail, um, uh, work that would need to be done. So what other possibilities might there be? Not in the, not in the budget numbers, but again, just trying to think down-the-road future. Here might be another possibility, I'll go to that same slide. Tear down the jail, and then you could have that whole part of the block for some future, some future project. I don't know what it might be. Riverblock, twenty-five years from now, maybe? We'll all be, you know, enjoying golf in heaven, but, uh, maybe that's where Riverblock comes. You know, I don't know, who knows what the future might hold, but, but I think where, what, the option three offers is the ability that in building a completely new building, which you're going to see is the most expensive from a capital cost. You will, you, you, you know that already. The operating costs are going to be less than the operating costs are forever. It does allow the county the, the option and the consideration that future expansion, if it were to happen, by getting rid of the jail, allows you that space in the future to build something else and still try to maintain the campus where everything is all together. So, um, I'm not trying to offer an editorial, but I'm just saying that in our planning of facilities, oftentimes there is this desire to keep everything on one campus. And by building all brand-new gives you the county the opportunity to have something into the future that you might be able to use. So, um, yes?
Do you think these options include an outdoor exercise area?
They include, yes. Outdoor, outdoor as you imagine it to be, which is outside, um, is quite unlikely in new jail designs. What we have done, are doing in our projects, is that we would have a large exercise area that what we would call is both inside and outside. It's not the same, I know. Um, it, it's, it's a two-story space, there's a big area on the outside wall, it's got a garage door, it has bars, so nobody's getting out. But in most of the year, the garage doors open, and so you can be in the space, it's like, I don't, it'd be a covered porch? I'm trying to think romantically. Silly, don't think that, Tom.
Oh, no.
No, you know, it's outside, in a sense, it's outside. You can hear birds, you can, you can see sky, you can feel the out, you can be cold, you can, you can sense perhaps the, the seasons, if you will. That's usually, that's, that's the standard when we talk about outdoor exercises. And I'll answer, I'll just leave it at that. So, how are we going to do this? We're going to, you're going to help here, I think. That's what, come up here. He, he put some of the numbers together, so, you know, you hire an architect to design a building, you hire a contractor to budget it, just please. What we're going to talk about now, and there will be some discussion with operating costs, but I'm just going to summarize them, and then wherever that conversation goes, the staff here will probably be able to answer them. The, slide that I have on seven, this is what, this is what everybody's waiting to see, I know. Um, slide seventy-eight is going to talk about the jail operating budget. The lines on the left, the five-point-three million, is the proposed, I believe, is that right? The twenty-twenty-one budget for the jail. It has, what, five line items, wages, overtime, meals, medical, mental health, and then there's this thing called transport safekeeper, one-point-one million. That's the cost to rent beds and all associated costs out of county, one-point-four million. Now, we know that most jails, um, probably are understaffed, meaning that to really function properly, there probably really need to be some additional positions in the jail. And the sheriff has to, so that we can create an apples-to-apples comparison, so recognizing that we don't want in our numbers to suggest, the sheriff to suggest a, a staffing number that they could live with in the future. What we're starting with is, we're looking at the current jail and saying, what staff does the jail really need to be able to compare to the other options? Does that logic make sense? You can agree with it or not, but we're trying to adjust, that we use that word, trying to adjust the number of staff and some of the associated costs in the current jail so that we can do that apples-to-apples comparison. So, the five-point-three has gone to six-point-five, is that right, Ken?
Yes, right.
Okay. Right, wrong, or otherwise, we're going to use that for comparative purposes. So then, when we go to option one, and Kurt, you can, why don't you mention briefly the project costs?
Sure, I just want to give you a little bit of background of how we came up with these numbers. You'll see these colorful drawings that John put together, and it's not a full floor plan. So the estimating that we do at this level is really conceptual. And what it's done, how it's done is based on historical data of similar projects, right? As you, uh, proceed further with the design, more detailed estimates will be handled. But at this point, these are conceptual, and when you look at your, your slide, or the one that's up here where it talks about construction cost, this is talking about bricks and mortar. It's talking about everything that goes into building the structure. The soft costs or non-construction costs are contingencies, fixtures, furnishings, equipment, um, any, um, permitting that is required, design fees, all those sorts of things. So sometimes people confuse construction cost and project cost. Project cost is all-in, construction is really bricks and mortar. It's the best way for us to explain it. Yes, or?
So, in, in each of the examples, you have construction costs and non-construction costs. So even in the examples that require demolition or gutting, that demolition and gutting would be in the construction or the non-construction?
In the construction.
So it's being considered in the construction?
Correct.
And that can say it's just soft cost and non-construction? That's, that's pretty high percentage, eight over four.
Uh, we've seen it range anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five percent. So you've got twenty as kind of a middle of the road. So, okay? The other thing is, is you'll see that we've got it listed as twenty-twenty-one bid. We've priced it as if you would start construction in twenty-twenty-one. A lot of times when we work on master plans, we give a county a number, they decide to wait three, four years, and they expect that that same number is going to be held up. It's not the case. Uh, we've seen the cost of escalation of construction range anywhere from six to eight percent. So that's something to keep in mind, uh, when you look at when you would pull the trigger on the project. So this is priced in dollars for twenty-twenty-one, okay? So on option number one, based on just the construction cost, and that includes all demolition, renovation, um, and bricks and mortar, uh, that's forty-three million, uh, dollars.
And with the twenty percent, it's, um, fifty-one?
Yep.
And then you'll see, without getting into the details, the sheriff is proposing that the operating cost for option one is six-point-seven million. And then compare that to the slide before where we made this adjustment, to six-point-five. So in option one, the operating cost is, what, roughly two-hundred-thousand dollars more with the larger jail. So kind of in the big picture, kind of a break even, in, I think, at least in that respect. So that's option number one. So, Kurt, the.
Option two A, as John had talked about, that these options do have a phase one and a phase two. Uh, phase one is what we have priced in option two A. The construction cost for phase two A, for option two A phase one is forty-million-seven-sixty-five. And then with the soft cost, we get to forty-eight million, point, forty-eight-point-nine million.
So you'll see that now the operating cost has dropped to five-point-eight million. And the sheriff's staff can explain that as we go along here a little bit. And it has to do that the, um, all-inclusive, three pods of jail, you can staff that more efficiently than two pods of jail and trying to staff the existing jail. That really is the, the essence of that. So the new design is more staff-efficient. And then likewise, compared to that adjusted operating cost of six-point-five. So, um, we're going in the right direction from an operating cost perspective. And obviously, keep in mind, capital cost is a one-time cost, operating costs every year. Here's your.
Two A is phase two, so the construction cost on phase two of option two A is five-and-a-half million dollars.
Plus the soft cost, yeah. So then, um, two B is, uh, your, your costs are pretty much the same.
Real close, yeah.
Yeah, real close. And then three A is your, your most expensive.
Yeah, three A is the one where you're taking the entire structure, it's built adjacent to the courthouse, so obviously, more work associated. to the courthouse, so obviously more work associated with the square footage. So the construction cost is 52 million with the soft cost added. We're at 62.5.
Ted, I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm asking myself, why are the operating costs for 3 more than 2? Is that my math there? Is it my math there? My math there? They should be the same.
They should be the right number.
Yeah. So, 84, that 6.7 should be 5.8. Yes, let's fix that. And we'll get corrections to you. That's a big boo-boo.
If you said it, it'd go down.
Yeah. It's 5.8.
5.8.
Page 84, the lower left, the 6.7 should be 5.8. And then 3B is the same, it's 5.8. So page 84 and 85. Did it, these are spreadsheets, so they should, the numbers should cross over.
I guess while you're doing that, it's just a note that I would, or a comment I'd like to make make on a question earlier about the utilities in the street. I've been a part of projects where counties have actually constructed in a city street, and it would surprise you that that is typically cost-effective to do that in relationship to be able to make a connection from the jail to the courts. One of the counties that I worked with, it has to do with the relationship between the county and the city. I will put that in there as a caveat. But the discussion was if the county was to take the utility relocation and make it a part of their project, and the city was there to oversee the actual construction of the utility work and sign off on it, they then would take ownership of that utility infrastructure after the fact, and then the the purchase or the acquisition of that property for the street is handled in obvious the legal details. But it was relatively cost-effective for that project. I think we did it for between $250,000 and $300,000. So in the overall scheme of a $40 million project, it's cost-effective to be able to give you that.
If they were, if that's the case, who would be the responsible for the maintenance of it? They, we were...
Yeah, that's what I just said, is that the caveat was they wanted to have an inspector there to make sure that it met their their requirements for installation, and then they signed off on it. They then took the maintenance and operation for the balance of the of the life of the utility. So it it's effective. It's a it's a good thing to to work out.
87 is correct. Yep. As as we would have expected. So I'm I'm looking at the long column of numbers. The 5.8 million operating cost is going to be the same for the As and the twos and the threes. So there the typo, which we'll fix, and we'll get an updated version, will be on what pages? We're going to fix 84 and 85. Any, well, we we've broken the no-question code. Any more questions on the on these costs?
I just want to make one more comment before I'm done. One of the things that I've been dealing with with counties, obviously helping with the financing piece, and this is a big number for any county, it's one of those things that's hard to swallow, and I'm not sure how consistent, how much you are up on the construction market. But right now, the construction market in the commercial world is extremely competitive. I've seen, there's a lot of contractors that need a lot of work. We built buildings in the 2008 decline, and owners got buildings at unbelievable costs, and you guys are getting into that same condition right now. So some of these things, we haven't taken into consideration potential bid savings that you may see. You know, it'd be great if you had something ready to go up to bid today. That's not the case. But it's something to be aware of. And the other thing is, is the borrowing rates of what's available out there right now, it is phenomenal of what we're seeing counties borrow at. So an exercise of working with bond counsel to see how that would impact your overall budget for either one of these options, we would work with John and them to to help you get that information of when it make makes sense to do a project. So, thanks.
Any any other questions on the budget numbers?
I say now, for all constructive alert, if there are any prisoners that are going to be released at the same time, any competent prisoners, you're allowed to move in or move out.
I think the the thought here, the hope, is that we're not having to relocate any prisoners during any of this construction, that either we're we're building new construction to move prisoners into that new construction and then go back and do any remodeling that might be required, like in option, the option twos.
So this new construction, there's not an additional elevator included?
Oh, there are lots of elevators.
Oh, so there will be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I you didn't mention that specifically, and I thought, well, surely there are more elevators that are down here. Because we only have that one, two elevators in county.
Don't quote me on that, at least. A question had come up about the state and their bed rental program. There are counties, historically, I think about Agamey being kind of the poster child where 25 years ago, they built this enormous jail in downtown Appleton and signed this long-term contract with the state. They pretty much built part of the jail to house state inmates. And there's not only state, but there are also federal inmates. So like Dodge County, where Waupun is located, they have a long-term contract with the federal government where they have a whole part of the jail, the renting beds to the federal government. So the question was asked, well, where does the state stand with regards to bed rentals? And earlier this week, I spoke with Greg Buckholz, his name is on the slide. He heads up all the detention facility jail inspections for the state. So he's also been responsible for all the contracts that counties have with with the state for bed rentals. And so, as I note here, the state will contract with the county for bed rentals, but it's on only on an as-needed basis. And currently, right now, they don't really need a lot of beds because they've let a lot of people out of prison. And right now, there are 13 counties that have some kind of a contract with the state. But I think that the important thing in the note and the conversation is that with maybe Agamey having been an exception, the state will not offer any guarantees to any county to rent beds. I think every project that we work on, when this question comes up, we often will say, don't don't finance this project based upon renting beds to the state because there's no guarantee that that will happen. You certainly, when a facility and you have excess capacity, it's prudent, advisable to seek bed rental, like as Waupaka is doing. But to plan on that as a basis for the reason justification for building the facility, you're you're actually skating on thin ice because it may not happen, if that logic makes sense. But it's an important discussion, it's part of the conversation. Chapter nine, this is going to be good. Stay as is. Why is it, Phil, it's, why is it going to be so good? It's going to be entertaining, should be eye-opening, I think. I'm going to start some of this, and then I think Kurt, you're going to kind of motor through the dollars. So this might be the most important chapter in the whole book, which is what happens if you stay here? Again, I think I look at it from three three perspectives, economic, which is the bed rental and the capital cost, operational as well as as physical. So from an economic point of view, if you stay as you are, and we've already outlined those costs, what, 1.4 million? That's the bed rental, that's the transportation, that's the staffing, out-of-pocket expenses, so on and so forth. Those are dollars out of your pocket from an economic perspective. There is the capital cost, which we'll talk about. I'll jump ahead, there's probably $5 million worth of improvements that need to be made to the jail. We'll just use that as a round number. You'll see that if you haven't already jumped ahead, $5 million roughly. And then, of course, any ongoing maintenance related to an existing building. From an operational point of view, and this really fact is a factor of of having prisoners in a different county. As I suggested earlier, when you move to Waupaka, you lose any programming. You lose any of the services that Waupaka, that Wood provides to their to their inmates, their offenders. And when you think about the reality that most offenders are really in jail for a relatively short period of time, and they come back into the community, whatever services and benefits that can begin that rehabilitation, so to speak, in jail, AA, whatever it might be, doesn't happen when they're in Waupaka. Just it it's not part of the program. Family visitation, difficult to happen. And certainly, we know from technological, a lot of visitations actually happen over the over the phone or over their laptops even now. But if you're going to see your loved one, you're going to drive to Waupaka to do that. One of the things that we heard repeatedly from the people that we met and talked with at the beginning of the study were that you've got a lot of staff members here who actually do provide services to those offenders that are in Waupaka. A lot of it, no doubt, right now is virtual, like so much of what our lives are about. But if we get back to normal, whatever that might be, they're driving to Waupaka to provide those services. So you actually have people from other departments in the county who are driving to Waupaka to provide those services, and those numbers and the time that they spend are not factored in anything that we are talking about here today. So that's at least something to give thought to. Now, when we get into the the 5 million, we're just going to have Kurt go through these pretty quickly.
So part of the cost exercise that we did for the project, Ruben had identified a list of items that really needed to have some attention in the jail. And we had a couple of phone conversations in our Zoom world that we live in with John and Ruben and my team. And then what we did is we actually engaged some of the mechanical electrical contractors that are familiar with your campus. We compared that with some of the costs that we've seen on other projects that we've done. And here, we've given you a range. And the reason that we give you a range is there are some variables for each one of these options, and we'll talk brutally about them as we walk through here. Right now, currently, what you have in your jail is called a dual duct system, means that you have a hot and a cool duct that comes to a mixing box. That when you have a temperature control revision, that mixing box takes place to do that. Because of the life cycle of those boxes, many of them are not functioning the way they should be. Parts have been difficult to 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 come up with. Ruben had asked, you know, what is the potential of replacing that with a hot water reheat, which means that you'd have a variable air box that would adjust your flow, and it would then have a hot water coil that would adjust your temperature up or down in each one of those cell blocks or those areas that were there. When I talked to the contractors about it, there is a potential that if you do go to a VAV box, you could potentially reuse the two ducts that are there. There would be some engineering that would need to be identified to see if you could actually support the CFM that's required for the new system. That's the low end of the project, if you could reuse the ductwork. If you can't reuse the ductwork, we have to take that out, and we have to provide new supply in return, along with the new VAV boxes. That's when you get on the higher end of that replacement for your HVAC system within within the structure. Again, we've identified construction costs on each one of these slides. We then also included what the cost would be for soft costs for design or contingency. One of the elements that you've got to think about in these projects when you're jumping into them is there's a lot of unknown when you dive into some of these about what you're going to uncover when you're doing the renovation. So that's why you're seeing the soft costs on each one of these. Next one is the DDC controls or your temperature controls. Right now, you have replaced about half of your pneumatic controls with DDC. They're still dealing with lack of control of the of the pneumatic, where the pneumatic is still in place versus the DDC. We've put an estimate on replacing the balance of the pneumatic controls with DDC somewhere between 100 and 125,000. The soft costs are tied to that as well. Boiler replacement, we have priced two 500,000 BTU hot water condensing boilers in this price. They would then modulate. What that does is it gives you redundancy for the system. If one were failing, you'd have a backup. It's also one of those things that when those boilers are being exercised, their life is longer in regards to being able to to shut down and then be able to be able to modulate between the two boilers. The price for that is somewhere between 75 and 100,000, depending on what you have to do with the manifold system. And again, we've got the cost associated with that for the boiler replacement. Next one is emergency generators. We've priced a 275 KW generator. I understand you've had some difficulty with the one that you have here on site. The question was if we would replace it along with the transfer switches, because there is a question of whether just the transfer switch needs to be replaced. Right now, this is priced as generator and transfer switch, okay? If it was determined that the transfer switch would only be the case, it would be a smaller number. But for budgeting purposes, we have included the generator and the transfer switch. The range for that is somewhere between 225 to 300,000, and then the soft costs are tied to that as well. Light fixtures, this is just going through and replacing all of the fixtures in that space with LED. There's obviously cost benefit or energy benefits that offset the upfront costs associated with that. But there's also light fixtures that are failing. The reason that you're seeing the increase in cost in this is they do need to be detention-grade LED fixtures. And when you put detention grade in front of any product, the price goes up. So understand that that's priced accordingly with this portion of the project. This is the security electronic system. We've priced this based on control of the locks. There are some solenoid valves that are failing. When I talked to the contractor that does this, it was hard to pin down a range in regards to the replacement, because some of your, our locks are really antiquated. So the discussion was, can we even replace some of them? And then if we replace them, what's the cost associated to that? You're not the first county that we've dealt with on that. When you get into a 30-plus-year-old facility and you're dealing with detention equipment, I've actually had facilities, people who are shopping on eBay trying to find parts. And that's it, that's the effect. And you're running into those same elements that are here. So this this number here represents an upgrade in your entire lock system and the control that you have from master control for solenoid valves and the things that the staff will control in that geopopper outside of the cameras. Cameras are another cost that we're going to talk about here. Fire alarm system, this is a replacement of not only the head end, but as well as the horns and strobes within the within the that portion of the building. Range for that is 50,000 to 100,000 for the upgrade of the fire alarm. Again, that is also tied in with master control. Security cameras, you do have many analog cameras that are still in place. This is an upgrade to digital cameras, and this is also an additional number of cameras for heightened security, heightened ability to be able to to have other viewing areas. We've added about 120 cameras to this number, as well as the upgrade of the analog to the digital. So the range on that, 125 to 200 for construction, and then you can see the the soft costs are tied to that as well. In speaking with Ruben, there are many plumbing fixtures that are failing. There is a detention-grade level of fixtures that is priced in here. The replacement of those fixtures has ranged anywhere from 500 to 650. That's if you did all of them. It doesn't mean that you need to do all of them today, but when one starts to fail, it is an indicator that the other ones aren't going to be far behind. So these are giving you a visual or a perspective of what that potential cost may be if you decide not to do anything new and the renovation is needed. And this last one was interesting. I understand that you had some cast iron pipe that has actually corroded and rotted. There's been some replacement that's in there. We have worked with contractors that actually line cast iron pipes, okay? So they go in and actually line them with a fiberglass liner. And in talking to that contractor, they wanted to know if there had actually been any cammering or if there had had been anything throughout the balance of the jail. That has not been done, okay? So right now, this is a, this is a pretty good guess. I can't hone in on this, but this gives you a range, okay? Either coming in and doing a fiberglass liner, which the potential may be, that might not even be an option if it's corroded to a point where that liner is not able to bond or adhere to be able to line that cast iron pipe. The other component is to actually come in like this gentleman here is in the trench and go into your secured area and then replace that pipe with a PVC pipe. And this million dollars that I put in here may actually be light because of the phasing that would need to be done. You talked about displacement of inmates. Where would we put them? How would we move them? The security associated with that, anytime you have a contractor enter a secure perimeter, there is a loss in productivity because there's tool checks, there's a lot of things that go into that. So when I put 500 to a million, I told John, I go, that is a wild guess. And if you have to do everything, replace PVC underneath that slab, that million dollars is probably light. So I think that's everything I've got here. This is kind of a summary. So again... This is kind of a summary. So again, the reason for ranges is that there's a lot of variables in regards to the scope and what you may uncover when you're diving into these. Some of them are more tightly budgeted than others, because I think we got a pretty good handle on the scope. But your range from high to low is 3.8 to 5.5 million dollars if you don't do anything. And this gives you an idea of what needs to be done for potential maintenance work.
Brad, go ahead.
Thank you. I just had a question on this. We're going to have to do most of this anyways if we just rebuild it from the sheriff's department, correct?
Can you be more specific, Brad? I'm not exactly sure what the question is.
Well, the question is, this has got to be done. Let's say we decide we don't want to spend $50 million, which is not my suggestion whatsoever. But if we decide to rebuild, let's say one of the ops, and rebuild the area for the, for the inmate, you know, using I think 102 ops, 100 ops, probably need some in the area if you're in the home and the other one. Or because we're in some of the same ways, aren't we? Is that included in the other costs?
Like 2A, when we're remodeling, are we going to reuse the existing jail?
Well, the renovation, the renovation would get included in.
The renovation would cover those expenses.
These are already included in the other.
Well, it would be.
When it, when it applies, they are. There's, there's a discussion about the timing of some of this. If you elected to go completely vacate the jail, and let's say it's a three-year timeframe, maybe, if you started, if you bid at 21, you had two years of construction, it's three years, can the jail survive not doing these replacements for the next three years? You might find that some of them you would have to do if systems failed. But you might be able to operate as you have, short term, without making those improvements.
And that's not what I'm asking. I'm sorry. What I'm asking is, if we decide to go with one, with the ops, you know, not doing that, not doing 5 million, but part of this is going to have to be part of the new system. Do you get what I'm getting at? You know, if we use the building that we've got the inmate in right now, if we reuse the buildings, we're going to have to do this stuff anyways. Whether we, you know, whether we do nothing, do nothing, and do nothing, or if we decide to the sheriff's department.
I guess not necessarily. Not necessarily. I guess the components that are tied into the underground, if you went into the next phase of design, what I would suggest is doing some evaluation of what you have for underground. The underground, if that jail is renovated, then you can determine that. The boiler, if the boiler is going to be reused or you're going to use that space, we've already associated in our cost of that renovation to upgrade the HVAC system and that conceptual number of having a new HVAC system.
That's what I'm asking.
Now, if you just, yeah. So, so in the renovated numbers, we do have new mechanical, electrical included in those numbers. We're, we're gutting it down to basically the bare walls and the ceilings and we're starting new. That's how it's priced. Now, answer.
That's what I'm saying is this number is, we're going to be paying this number, this slide a million dollars, just the wrong number. We're going to be paying this slide a million dollars one way or another.
Yes. A lot of that scope's going to be included in one of those options.
Slide that's up, I believe. That number is included in this slide. But then if you go to that, it would not be, because you're not doing that work.
The gray area is right there. I pointed that again. I see. All right. All right. That's what I was trying to say. All I was trying to say is that we're going to have to pay that 5 million one way or another, just the way we get this stuff. We're going to be doing it the way we go.
Let me go to Supervisor Radnor, I think.
There's a request to take a break?
No, I was going to ask, the contractor gentleman mentioned that we need to do some research to find out how much would that affect. I think it would be wise, one way or the other, no matter what we decide, but to budget for some camera work on those, say from vicious sewer waters from one of the companies that does the lining type of thing, so that we could get a real handle on how much, how much would actually have to be replaced and we could do the budgeting and do some certainty in that. And from both that, and it won't matter if we're going to, if we're going to leave as is or if we're going to renovate it into something else. We'll need to do that anyway, as the gentleman was, was referring. But I think we need some element of certainty in that. I think, I think in the grand scheme of things, the cost of televising those lines would be money well spent.
I had a request from our presenters to take a five-minute break before we get into the question part of this. And I'm sure there's going to be significant questions. Is that okay with everybody?
Absolutely.
Five-minute break?
Absolutely.
In return, all right. Thank you. So I guess at this point, we are in the question and answer phase of this. And there's a number of questions that John is probably going to have to answer most of. But Supervisor Lightman.
Okay, so somewhat related question and issue. No matter which option we would choose, it looks to me like our campus is going to be moving south to some extent. So I'm thinking about, I think abandoning Avon Street is a given. Losing probably 10 parking spaces is a given. The old Red Owl Building going is a given. I can see there's probably a need for an acquisition of at least one private residence, maybe more. When the, when the River Block building was acquired, leased, rented, whatever, parking became a much bigger issue than I thought it was going to become. To this day, I think people working in the River Block walk, some of them walk from four blocks away. So are we going to have to, in a related cost, are we going to have to think of a parking lot on the Ebsen Greenhouse property? Would we have to think of a parking ramp? Has that come into any of the thinking? No matter which option.
Well, Bill, you know, to your point, part of the reason we did the acquisition of that property up there, you know, anticipation that someday something might need to be done. I think with the parking that we currently have available, if you look at the number of people in those spots, yeah, we probably have added our parking if we add that. But that is something that would be taken into account.
As you would move to a capacity of 250 to 300 inmates, two down the road 20 years, is that something we need to look at now or do we wait?
From a parking capacity? You mean, most of them don't drive.
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of staffing, I'm thinking of visitors, I'm thinking of going from 106 or 130 to a lot larger number of inmates.
Yeah, it's certainly something to look at. You know, Baker Street lab currently sits virtually empty most of the time. But it obviously is something that would be part of the plan.
Thank you.
All right. So now for those technical questions that anybody has or the discussion they want to enter into. Laura, go ahead.
Thank you.
Just that, if you mind if I use your first name as informal.
No, we don't have it at all.
Okay, Laura, go ahead.
So my, my history is in maintenance. I guess my biggest concern, I understand that some of the building was built in the 50s, but the majority of the facility's infrastructure was in the 80s. That's kind of young, isn't it? I mean, I work on fighter jets that are older than that. Why, what kind of timeframe do we expect to have to replace this new building?
Laura, I made a note here, and this is kind of interesting. You know, you've heard oftentimes that back in 98, the board voted to build a jail and they decided not to pay for it. That's not exactly how that conversation went. Consentually, we said that a pod system is the way to go. We looked at that. We toured many of them. I've probably been at minimally 10 counties that, that had this system replaced. We got to the cost benefit analysis and we looked at the plan. We said, although that's what we would build if we moved forward, at this point in time, and it's not financially at least palatable for the vast, you know, the majority of the board. But your point is well taken. And it's a note I wrote, is you know, you have a 32-year-old facility that, you know, by which is more than 50% inadequate to some extent, that quickly. So if I look back at the numbers in that perspective, I go, well, we probably save, and even if I roll in the transport cost and anything, I probably saved $20 million already by not having built that jail then. So your point is well taken. And I'm going to let the experts answer that. But yeah, if you have something that was done at that point in time, and you look at other structures that exist for 100 years, why, I think your question is, why are we at that point?
Exactly. Thank you.
And where would we be if we built a new one going forward? Would that be obsolete in?
I hope to still be in Wood County in another 30 years, so.
There you go. So I'll turn to the other of the experts.
If you don't mind, I'll touch a little bit on the cost perspective and what I've observed or heard from Ruben. Some of the as-is, stay-as-is costs has to deal with not investing in maintenance costs. That's not uncommon in counties that I deal with. A lot of times, if you build a new building, and if you build this building in 2021, you better put together a maintenance cost, because what happens is you build a new building and right away, that thing will be good for 15 years. 15 years later, things are falling apart because true maintenance wasn't done on it. Okay? Now, I don't know the, the life of what's been done in Wood County, but I can tell you that there are things that wouldn't be on the list right now if investment would have been made from, from the get-go, okay? John alluded to it in his presentation about the lifespan of the structure that you're looking. A lot of what you're talking about here is bed count. It's driven towards bed count. And you've got, you've got a way, is our, is our jail falling apart? Is it meeting our needs? And somewhere in the middle, you've got to balance that. So, you know, that $5 million number may go, do we have to spend that today? No, you don't have to spend it all today. But you're, it's things you're going to need to address in the next year or two. And evaluate that with what are you spending out of county?
So our upgrading costs, our projected upgrading costs with a new structure do not include maintenance? That's also correct?
No, I think operating costs is mainly wages.
So there would still be the background annual maintenance?
Just like you would want to do this building. You're going to want to, even after you do the upgrade, let's say you do an upgrade on the boiler, there has to be some maintenance that's done with that. And again, I don't know the history here, but it's not uncommon for me to see that with counties. So. And another thing to answer your question, when the projects that John works on, that I work on, they're a 30- to 50-year solution, okay? Things become obsolete and out of date. When we talked about the cameras, you know how quickly electronics escalate and change. An analog camera is like, you know, driving a horse and buggy in nowadays's terms. And the thing about that is that the clarity on a digital camera, if there was an incident to happen in the jail, the liability offset to have an HD camera that's shooting 15 to 30 frames per second versus an analog, you can't put enough value on that. So what you're going to do with those, that infrastructure makes a big deal in regards to the investment. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I mean, to get that started, I can put a value on it. I work with the insurance company. It's a significant cost. And I'm just going to try to get the conversation rolling, because I'd like to keep this conversation, you know. Some things were brought up. And I have no preconceived notion as to where we should go or what we should do. I'm really glad we're starting this discussion today. I did sit in a meeting a couple months ago, there were probably 10 of us in the room, I was with the governor and Secretary Cobb, and we were talking about incarceration at the state level. And their goal is to reduce the incarceration rate by 50%. So just moving forward, as John alluded to, I wouldn't bank on any state inmates coming to your jail. When I talk to the other county board chairs and county boards in the area, Portage, Marathon, some of the others that are contiguous to us, the conversation always, and I'm not trying to be funny, but all right, which one is going to flinch first and build a jail so we can use the capacity? Because the cost is, you know, fairly extreme. You know, that's one thing to look at. And then the other part of this that I hope we discuss is, there's a huge cost to build, but there's an associated cost with not building. And I'm aware of that. And part of that is safety of our staff, part of that is safety of those inmates, and the cost that we have incurred when we don't provide the best level of supervision, whether it be cameras or whether it be a pod situation, where you have better visuals of those inmates in there. And that's, that's something that you'd say shouldn't happen. For instance, you have a jail suicide, but it has occurred. And there are costs associated with that. So I, like I said, I have no preconceived notions. I just started to see the numbers today. And then how economically, then cost benefit analysis, where do you go? How do you do it? How do you fund it? What's the tax burden? What don't you fund that you were going to fund? Because you can't make more widgets in government, you know, there's, there's a certain amount of tax dollars that you have to work with. And so I'm hoping that starts a conversation and we get some of those questions as we roll. Go ahead, please.
There's a lot in that. But I guess there's something that jumped out to me. And again, John's been working with you guys for a year. He asked me to help with some cost things. So if I'm overstepping my bounds, step on me. But one of the things that jumped out to me, when I saw that you're spending $985,000 a year to house inmates out of county, was shocking to me. I'm working with a county right now that we are planning a $38 to $40 million jail. The cost that I got back from bond to finance that over a 20-year term was just over $2 million. So think about that. If you would take half of that cost, a $20 million construction project, it would be a net zero. It would be a wash in regards to getting you $20 million towards the building, because you wouldn't be housing those inmates out of county. There's a lot of things that go into that and consideration that, you know, putting all of that stuff on the table is important. And I think the other thing that you have tied to that I don't think a lot of county board supervisors that I've worked with think about is that the liability of housing that inmate outside your house still rests with you. And you just don't have the ability to control that population. And to me, there's a lot of risk associated with that in regards to what may happen if they're outside of house. Because I think most county board supervisors think, well, outside of our county, it's not our deal anymore. It's still, it's still the county's deal. So those are some important things that have been decision makers for counties that I've worked with. And I don't know if that.
Yeah. And as we've watched these costs climb, back in 98, I hate to say I'm right enough to have been in part of this conversation.
2000.
2000. Well, no, when we made the original decision to not build.
The vote was not before 2000.
Was 2000?
Because I didn't come on the board.
Okay. Well, whenever we did it, you know, the number that we had in mind, we said, if we're not spending minimally a million dollars a year on transport, we're dollars ahead. And that was done through that, you know, cost benefit analysis. And that was based on additional staff, construction costs, not just the interest cost of the project, but to what Laura alluded, to the depreciated cost of the asset. As you, as you look at, you just say, all right, we're 32 years in and we have something that is, to some extent, obsolete. And the thought was, you know, if we can delay another two years, pods were the hot thing then, they tend to be now, but what comes on the horizon tomorrow? So your point was, can you put a bandaid on it and come up with a better solution later? We may have reached that point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one thing that I think about when I think about that, because I did vote on that issue when I first got on the board. I look at these numbers and it looks like we started getting into trouble maybe in 2016 with our numbers going up. And because we have to talk about the dollars, obviously, what, what somebody said, I think John said it, is that this competitive market, I think you said it, the competitive market with the construction and bids even coming in lower than what you're thinking, and then borrowing rates low. And I like the, I like those two things when we look about the possibility about bonding for a new facility. But the other thing that I really like is the lowered operating costs. Because in that way, we're looking to the future to people who are going to have to support the operating costs. And if we can do things more efficiently with a new building, I just renovated a 1921 house. And I can tell you, and Laura also agrees with me, it ain't cheap to do that renovation. And so, you know, you're, you're still replacing plumbing, you're replacing electrical, you're, you know, putting up new drywall and new ceilings and everything. When I think about the increased energy efficiency with a new building that will benefit future county boards' decisions about how much to budget for operating and maintenance, I agree with you. School districts did this for years, too. We put up these expensive buildings, there was no budgeting for maintenance, and then all of a sudden, you had horrible deterioration of something that you invested a significant amount of capital in. And that was very disappointing. So when I, you've got to look at the big picture. And, and that really is going to influence my decision as we move forward as to what is the best way to deal with, with the situation, which I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. 18 years ago, when we talked about it, we weren't at that tipping point. I think we've gotten to that tipping point now.
Supervisor Radnor has a, probably a comment. I think it might relate to something we talked about.
Basically, everywhere in government we go now, we're hearing the same mantra that if you're going to do a project, now's the time to do it, because the interest rates are low and contractors are starving and you're going to get the cheapest building you've ever seen in your life. We get that all the time. That's probably true. We've seen some constructions, we've seen some bids come in recently on the Athletic Center in Marshall that came in very favorable. I was very surprised about that. But the, the thing that, don't start. But the thing that, don't start, don't start Mike. But the.
Resecurity.
You've got to. The thing that we, you know, Donna said we have to look at the big picture. Well, she's right. I hate to say it, but she's right. But the bigger picture is larger than the one she actually showed. And that bigger picture is what's happening in the economy to our constituents, and that's what's going to occur. Right now, Wisconsin Rapids, the city of Wisconsin Rapids is going through a very dramatic time. Marshfield is going through something similar, although it's sort of underground, it's sort of the same thing. So the problem is, we can get low bids, but, you know, the contractors are starving, but so are some of our constituents. So the economy is a two-edged sword, and I don't want us to jump at something because the one side of it looks better than the other. I think we have to take both into consideration. From the presentation that was given, I generally, what I wrote, what I wrote on my notes here about renovating the old jail is why would we put a string of pearls on a snake? And that's.
Or let's seal on a pig.
But at this point, maybe that string of pearls is all we can afford. So we're going to have to take that into consideration. And the last thing, the last point is, in order to do that cost-benefit analysis, we're going to need some input from our financial advisors, and I think we should probably make room on one of the agendas in the very near future to talk about that and have them do some pro forma for us. So I think that's where we have to stand on it. So I can't, I know that's wishy-washy, but at this point in time, caught between renovation costs over here and putting the burden on taxpayers, I think that makes me wishy-washy. So, excuse me.
Thanks. The presentation, because that's, the presentation obviously causes a lot of questions to be asked, who knows when we will call. You know, Supervisor Wagner actually walked out in the hall. Anytime you phase a project, it becomes more expensive down the road. But we're a long way from three hundred inmates, and, you know, my background was, you know, hotel and motels, restaurant management. A full hotel is much more cost-effective than one that is at fifty percent occupancy and don't bank on people coming from elsewhere. So, you know, that's a thought. Is that a possibility? Is that something that's more financially feasible at the end of the day? And I don't know. I mean, if the cost escalates at twenty percent a year, then it's probably not a good idea to do it that way. Those are a lot of questions that I think have been brought to light today that we need answers on as we further. I don't think this is something where we just say, we can't look at this. I think we need to look at this, and I think we need to get the answers. Please.
The situation here is, you know, that's how we look at it. Facility is worn out. It's done. And the situation here is, are you going to take money and throw it in the hole and not increase beds? The safety is going to be a hard time bringing back into what it really needs to be, not only for the inmates, but for the staff. The other part about this is, is there's a lot of programs that could come in. There were programs in previously which they are now doing in regards to education. What happened is, we had a program going in there for GED program, and it had to cease because the state went with a different organization. And by that, they required that computers had to be put in the room, they had to have a curtain on the window. I mean, there was all kinds of stuff that there's no way it could have been taken care of. Where I'm going with this whole thing is, what I'm seeing is if we, as a county, go ahead with this, you're looking at down the line, being able to keep up, because right now, we aren't going ahead, we're going which way. Looking at using the old facility, you're going backwards. And all that's going to do is compound the cost more so now than in. The reason I bring this to mind is I'm a layman minister. And the situation here is, we have had, you can ask the staff, we have had complete, no, we've had some results. But the trouble is, is the staff, because of the facility, has not been able to allow us to work like we would like for this simple reason, because of situations where inmates were causing a problem and they have to take care of that problem and can't take care of us at the same time. Whereas if you go ahead with the new facility, there's a good chance that you can start working with some of these people so they won't come back, that they have a different attitude, they come out of the jail with an attitude of, I'm going to do something for the community instead of being a deficit, become an asset. Thank you.
No, certainly something to take into consideration. I think the first statement I made when I started talking is we need to look at the safety of the staff and those people incarcerated. So, you know, that's part of the equation. The tough part always is, you know, hey, a new car is great, smells good, drives great, but the cost sometimes is something that a family can't afford. Supervisor Wagner alluded to, you know, we always look at, how many people do we displace from a home with a more onerous property tax bill? How do we handle that? We've got, beyond, you've got nine hundred layoffs occurring across the street tomorrow, and those people certainly have financial considerations. So we're trying to balance all this. And, you know, another thing we're working on right now, the Tommy Thompson Center in UW Madison that they just opened, is dealing with this. How do we educate? How do we better prepare those people coming out? To your point, you also need to have the facility to be able to do that. I mean, it doesn't magically occur. So these are all the questions that are going to come before us, and there's going to be a lot of them. Do you have any comments, questions from the sheriff? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just have a question. On page forty-seven, there's the average daily population to jail bed projections. And I see from 2016 to 2019, there was an increase, both in county and outside of county. And I think Supervisor Rosar alluded to that. If I'm doing my math correctly, between the two, we saw a seventy-one person increase over three years. Can someone share with me, do you have any data to, can tell us why that increase happened over the last three years? Because for a while, it looks like it's going down, and then I see an increase. So if someone could just share that with me, I'd appreciate it.
Ted?
The increase was incurred during, well, the opioids that started to come in, the amphetamines that have been in our community. At the point of 2016, they started to get convicted. We started, ended up with more people instead of serving a few days or serving a few months, and then that's why that time span of length of stay increased as well. So as we start to move people to other locations, we start to hang on to people in our location that are here longer periods of time than was convicted of the crimes they committed in 2012, thirteen, fourteen, and it finally catches up.
Yeah, I just got a follow-up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of other questions. I know you are working to get a jail discharger, I believe is the.
Discharge plan.
Discharge plan, thank you. And there's also been a lot of talk about diversion programs. Ideally, we want to see people not go to jail. So has there been any thought into this planning since we are protecting, or it is being protected right now, a three-hundred-person-bed jail? Do we need that if ideally we want to see that number go the other direction? Has there been any conversation with that regard?
Oh, lots of conversations. You know, through the last year, we're working hard to lower inmate population. And we're, to the gentleman back there, to piggyback on what he's saying, is the program, the program is huge, okay? If you look at the ripple effect of an inmate that goes back into our community and doesn't reoffend, pays taxes, works, provides for a family, look at the impact it has on our community. Whether it's Marshfield, Wisconsin Rapids, Pittsville, it's huge. That's been something our team has been invested in from the beginning. And what Supervisor Fisher was talking about, you know, with the criminal justice coordinator coming on, that's all going to have an impact, all right? And we discussed this at length, okay? How do you come up with three hundred beds? You know, going back and forth, you can do the projections, and I think one projection showed like we need four hundred and fifty beds. So we had to take a look at, all right, what is the best for Wood County? And that's where we came up with three hundred. But the goal is to lower inmate population appropriately, and we're seeing that through program, all right? And that, another thing to say, you know, we don't have the space for program. And that's really hard for us to do because we can't get everything that we want in there, all right? So, no, that's a huge thing. You know, we're looking at, well, we just renegotiated our contract with Adams County. We have twenty-five inmates there, we're down to fifteen. That saved us some money, about sixty thousand this year and about a hundred and twenty thousand next year. So those are ways we're going to continue to look at ways we can save you money, other taxpayers money. But that doesn't, you know, offset the needs of that facility that we have here right now, okay? But very, very high priority, you know, Supervisor Fisher, that we're going to look at ways that we can lower inmate population because big-picture-wise, saves us money, right? Bottom line, plus. So, that.
You know, as well as our EMP program, which is, you know, expanded, has saved us money and gotten more buy-in from the judges. So, I said, I have no idea where we're going to go, but I certainly appreciate the information that goes forward. Supervisor Ashback?
Thank you, buddy. We decided to go with a new one, too. We had, as a county board member, go through the board first to give us a choice, what page we wanted, what design we want, you know, what the people want on that page, and why we want it before it goes into committee, and then talk about it later, that the committee could decide what the majority of the people want.
Yeah, you're in the very, very early stages of getting this vetted. Supervisor Fire, you want to take that question? Well, it's early.
It's too early.
Right, but you don't know, but you know, the first step, you know, they decided to go that direction is which option are we going to go with? And then how are we going to fund that? What does that entail? How do we handle all the other questions that were asked here, Supervisor Hamilton's, some of the others, Avon Street, you know, vacating that in some way, and all of those plans other than just a straight remodel needs to occur. There are utilities there. There's also kind of a natural river that runs under Avon Street.
Oh, my goodness.
As it washed out our parking lot down at the bottom. I know that all the houses up the road run sub-humps basically twenty-four seven, so there might have to be some infrastructure done there, too.
How long do we have to wait before we have to make them up deals in the old jail? How long can you wait on them?
Maintenance will continue. I think the point was made earlier by Kirk, you know, there's ongoing maintenance. But then go back to Laura's point, there's going to be ongoing maintenance in a new facility, too, so maintenance is something that's always going to occur. You might be able to defer it a little bit in a new facility, but you need to do maintenance. John?
So I think we need to come up with a plan here, because if he's giving us 2021 numbers for construction, 2021 is just around the corner. So you're talking about a fairly aggressive plan of action here if we're going to make a decision. Tomorrow is August first, right? And so we don't have very many months left in 2020. If we're looking at 2021 numbers and we know it's going to get more expensive as we move, I think we need to have a pretty aggressive plan of action of getting the finance people in here, looking at our debt load, of maybe listening to our constituents as individual supervisors as to what they would like to see done. But I'd like to see a pretty aggressive movement of moving on this so we can depend on 2021 numbers and not moving into 2022 when construction costs are possibly going to go up. Is that kind of planned?
Well, that's a thought, but I can tell you, working in the real estate market and knowing where we are with even commercial properties right now, and we've seen people working from home and changes in other places, and construction projects that have actually been canceled, large ones, as they realize they don't need that office space, there certainly will be some inflation. But I think the decision being made deliberately is more important than, we have to hurry up and do this today or tomorrow. I think it's a process that may, it may take a little longer, but I think we should continue to move down the road. So the sheriff's department at least has an answer. You know, we're going to do A, B, C, or D. But I wouldn't let the time, you know, I don't think this is something that by, you know, January one, you need to know exactly what you're going to do if the information isn't available yet.
So what are your thoughts about how we're going to move? I mean, you're our county administrator, what are your thoughts as to where we go from here?
I think we're in the process right now, and I think that's the reason we had this meeting today, is, you know, this is the first time that I have seen the associated cost. And then obviously, we'll have those continued conversations, we talked about it earlier, is, you know, what are our projections on jail population? We roll in those costs. And then the intangibles, like I said, the ones that I deal with oftentimes are the safety of staff, their well-being, their mental well-being, and then on top of that, the ability to staff the jail and bring people onboard as we hire them through the county because it's, you know, an attractive, I mean, a living room, but a more attractive place to work as opposed to somewhere that's extremely difficult. And then the costs that we have with the inmates and some of the problems that we've had in providing their safety. So I think the Public Safety Committee is moving in that direction. You have a whole bunch of stuff you can chew on here. We can certainly, almost on a monthly basis, as we get more information updated, Supervisor Wagner alluded to some of the costs that we, that we need to look at. Where are we? Maybe Ted's got a quite a good answer, but where are we at today in jail population? I know with the COVID things, I've seen jail populations go way down in some counties. And then the question, is that going to be the way of the future?
Right.
Because we find out that's a viable alternative, or isn't it? Yeah, if you could.
Our population just prior to COVID-19 was two hundred and seventy-one.
And today?
It was one hundred and eighty-three.
Okay, so you had a reduction of almost a hundred, which is still, exceeds the capacity of our current facility considerably. But, you know, I don't know if that will be a temporary change, or if that's something that the legislature is going to adapt as the better way of doing business, right? Those are all things that we have to roll in. Supervisor Wagner?
Yeah, thank you. To speak to Supervisor Rosar's concern, sitting here today and hearing this presentation, I will probably ask for a future agenda item from the Operations Committee to ask our financial consultants to start them to give us some numbers for us on what these various scenarios might cause us in terms of debt service, if that's, with the provision of the chair, of course.
No, absolutely. In debt service right now, let's face it, could it go down, you know, a couple of points? The answer is yes, but it can't go a lot lower than it's zero.
Right.
I think it's much more likely to increase in that respect. Construction costs, I don't have any crystal ball, but based on the projects we're seeing being canceled in the commercial venue right now. Now, there are not a lot of companies that build jails, I think, that's probably a fair statement, those costs might not go down. John?
Can I offer, it was suggested earlier, you might want to put on your to-do list to do some touring of facilities. Not being so self-serving, but I think Eau Claire County would be an excellent facility to tour. It's very similar in design to what we're talking about here, the three hundred beds, the three pods, multi-level facility. That's certainly the one that comes to mind, to my mind. While we did the project, certainly, I think it best represents the kind of design that we're talking about here. Eau Claire is not that far away from Wisconsin Rapids.
So can you tell me, John, what was the budgeted cost of that facility and what ended up being the cost? Do you remember?
The number that comes to my mind is fifty-six million, but I'd have to go back to our, to our historical information. Now, that facility was completed maybe six years ago?
At fifty-six million.
I believe so, yeah. And it included pretty much the same elements that we're talking about here, at least as it relates to the jail, the pods as well as the jail support area. Now, that project did not have, well, let me think about this. In many ways, it's kind of the option two A, where we built the brand-new jail with three hundred beds, and then went back in to where the old jail was and remodeled that into sheriff's offices. A little different building remodeling, not this weird-shaped building that we have here, but I think Eau Claire would be an excellent place to tour. Heard you have some thoughts on that.
I will say this, I have toured a number of the pod facility jails that have been built, and functionally, they're much more effective. There's zero question in that respect. John, did you have a look?
Yeah, to piggyback on it, the door is open to any of you guys. If you want to come and take a look, I know some of you already have toured our jail, but please take the opportunity, before you look at any other jail, look at what we have. You know, Ted and I will give you a tour, talk about the issues, the concerns. You know, Ted and I will give you a tour, talk about the issues, the concerns, what we have issues with, what's working, all right? But start with us first. You can come anytime, just give us a call and tour our facility. And then we did, we did tour, you know, some of our supervisors went and toured Eau Claire, Wapaka, which we're paying for, and, what's his name? Green Knight. All podular design. But start with us first, and then we're more than happy to set up tours. Their shares are very, very accommodating and would welcome us back anytime.
Mike?
Public Safety has talked about this for about the last six years or more. And we keep talking about the jails, the situation in our jail. And I think it's time that, just not Public Safety, but the operations and everybody that's in county government start talking about this. So give us an idea where we want to go and what we want to do. We can talk about this for the next five years again, it's not going to do us any good. But the numbers are here, and let's figure out, and we got to look at the public safety, inmate safety, and our employees. And two of those aren't really in good shape right now. They just, if you go down and look at it, it's just not though. I wouldn't want to work in that environment at all because I'm not in law enforcement. The first time I went there, I thought, gee, this is something else. You look at other jails and they're, they're a lot easier to operate on. So we as a committee need something from the whole nineteen of us, not just five of us on a committee. We need to know which way we're going, and soon, so we can decide if we're going to rebuild or remodel or whatever.
Well, we've certainly rolled in an entire new committee with the process this new term, the property committee, our operations committee, you know, absolutely has to look at this. I can also tell you, you know, one of those, it's somewhat intangible. We talked about, you know, the linear facility we have right now is not conducive to safety, especially when I roll, I'll call it the insurability of our county. I can tell you that not just in our county, but in other counties who have experienced some of the same problems we've had with, you know, the staff's ability to oversee what's occurring in the jail, has actually come to a discussion, will it ensure even cover us? And if we're not covered, and some of these cases reaching into millions of dollars in settlements, I don't know, you roll that into a soft cost, but it becomes significant. So, you know, that's something that was high on my list. And I made two pages of notes while I was sitting there and they were talking. So you're right, Mike, the conversation has to be across the board. Donna?
So I'd like to add the Health and Human Services Committee to that thing because our, our mental health interest and desire for additional programming in the jail. When you look at the percentage of inmates who have mental health problems, that ensure, that programming becomes such an important thing with, with people coming back. And I think the discharge planner needs adequate space in order to provide that service. I love the pod system. I worked as a nurse in a linear system. When I get assigned to rooms all the way at the end of the hall, I'm exhausted by the end of the shift because you're running back and forth, the nurses stationed, and back and forth. I hate the linear thing that we have at the hospitals. I wish we built, you know, it's very expensive, but that pod system. Remember when we did the space needs study? We talked about the benefits of that pod system all those years ago when we did that. I believe we need a new jail with a pod system for a lot of the reasons that we went to, that we've talked about. I truly believe that a new building with the energy efficiency, with the efficiency of utilizing staff, with the safety and security, my vote would be for the pod system in a new facility. That's just where I, for a lot of reasons, and I know the devil's in the details, but we got to start somewhere with giving the Public Safety Committee. And I believe programming is essential to decrease people coming back. I appreciate that you talked about the churches because there have been Bible studies in our jails in the past, which helps to change character of people so that they don't come back. The mental health counseling, the AODA counseling, all of that is important. And I would support a new facility, very much so, with the pod system, with the ability to do programming to help the long-term, to long-term help our inmates. So somebody has to make a decision to start looking at that so that we can get what we need with costs and everything to know where that, where that's going to go. So I, I don't know if you're looking for a decision today, but I've been thinking about this for a long time. And I feel strongly that we've got to move forward with getting the information that we need to make a decision here in the next six to eight, twelve months.
The reason I said no, that I didn't know the supervisor's bad, I didn't make any decisions today because I'm just getting information correct, I said that is correct.
But you want to know how you feel.
But I do want to know how you feel. But it reminds, the presenters did the same thing, and you know, said, oh, I think that was a Penzoil commercial. You can pay me now or pay me later, kind of deal to some extent. The question is, do we have the ability to do that? And that's the question we need to answer. You know, Jake, if you'll turn on the Hurt Committee, too, I'll have all the committees. But obviously, those people, those other committees are going to be integral in the discussion. But as we roll in the minute, I didn't want you to feel left out over there. All right, do we have other questions yet today? There's a lot to digest. You got a hundred, what do we have, a hundred and five pages? Something around there, a hundred and five-ish?
If you make a decision, you skip some of them.
You can skip some of them. And some of this, for some of you, this is old information. Property acquisition, in some cases, we have done most of. And then at the end of the day, you know, one of the big ones is community buy-in. Now, you are elected supervisors to make tough decisions. But at the end of the day, if we need property acquisition, if we have to do something along those lines, something that needs to be addressed, we have to look at.
Well, we started that property acquisition with just a decision that we made recently.
We did.
Mm-hmm.
But to the point that I think Lord made yesterday, where these highlighted, those weren't houses. Are there any other, is there any other questions? Any other input? Sheriff's Department?
Just to finish up with, we're here to sell you a jail. It might sound like, you know, wow, like now, today was to give you the information, bottom line, all right? You know, it might, like I said, sound a little slight, but to be upfront and honest, it's about information, all right? When we took over, you know, about a year or so ago, it's a priority for you to at least make a decision on it, take a look at, take this information on, absorb it, the door is always open, come down, talk to us. Any questions from any one of us? Please communicate with us, you know, this is a huge, huge decision on your shoulders. We get that, it's a lot of money, but, you know, we have to make the decision on what direction we want to go. And one last thing on out-of-county inmate housing, that's going to go up. Our contracts are out by February 2023. Both Adams and Wapaka mentioned, you know, you can figure out at least probably forty dollars a day for inmate. So we can cost it out as we move forward, but that's going to be some real cost to take a look at, you know, as we absorb this, you know, information, okay? Any questions for me or for any one of us?
The Sheriff brings up a good point, though, you know, there is a cost. There's also a cost to, to have them in county in the real.
Right.
The important number is the difference. But then there are issues like when we're sitting in a drug court, listen, the judge says, can you take them down to jail? And she looks at us and goes, there ain't nowhere to put them. And you got to, we have that conversation often, you know, and the conversation of, can we, can we wait till Thursday to bring them in? And that's probably a conversation that we should not be having. But we do, it's a reality.
And lastly, thank you. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to come here all morning and listen to all of us speak, Adam, we really appreciate it.
There's some pages that we want to update, so we'll get an updated version.
Yeah.
So there are a couple. Supervisor Currie, I think she had a question, too, right away.
Yeah, I got one question. Really, I, we talked, and I believe my assumptions are right, that when we contract out to Wapaka or Adams, we're getting it a lesser rate than it costs in Wood County. I think this would be not true?
No, I think it's about twelve dollars more a day or something like that if I did the numbers right.
It costs more?
About twelve dollars more, yeah.
Okay, so what's the cost for, the average cost per prisoner for Wood County?
Last time I heard, we were about twenty-eight dollars a day. Does that sound about right, stuff? Okay, thirty-one now.
Okay, thirty-one dollars. And my assumption or my, what I've heard is it costs us more totally to go to, I'll just take Wapaka, to go to Wapaka and house them there, right?
That is correct. And then what we factored in back last time this happened, whether it was ninety-eight or two thousand, the difference between those two numbers times the cost of the money and the capital cost of the construction. And at that time, the number was about a million dollars. If you didn't exceed a million dollars in transport and out-of-county housing, we were still dollars ahead. But as we move forward and look to the future, obviously, we need to, to address that. And then there's also the, just the feasibility and the convenience of having everybody here in distress on the Sheriff's Department.
Mr. Lomax, I got one of the comments. I'm not, I don't want to say I agree with Supervisor Wagner, but what's going to influence my decision the most? The COVID deal, we're not going to know. We could sit here forever and say, how long is it going to last? The impact on our sales tax and our income. But I, what we've got to know, the other deal is what's happening in the mill in the southern part of the county. That's what is going to, those are the numbers that are going to have to come to me. Can we, I have no doubt that we should, we need a new jail. That is no doubt. Do we have the money to do it? Do we have the income? We're, we're mortgaging out for decades here.
Thirty years.
So that's, that's what I have to see right now, is can we afford to do this? I get, I get the deal, we could borrow at the lowest rates. Our construction costs are probably historic, not, not lows, but comparable to other years. But that's what I have to see. Do we, our income, our income and expenses, I got to know, I got to be satisfied that we have the income in the future. Thank you.
I know we're recording this, and I should never say this because my wife may watch, but that's the question I ask her every week. But we need something, and that is the question that you have to ask yourself. And we have to ask the residents of the county.
So I, just one last thing. I guess if somebody can sit through this for hours when they watch it on TV, you mentioned community buy-in. We have to decide what's going to be palatable to our taxpayers. And so I'm hoping that we hear from those taxpayers and that, you know, we're to represent the people. How do we represent the people unless we know what the people are thinking? So I would like to challenge the people that are going to sit through these two and a half hours of TV time to contact their local supervisors. Let us know what your thoughts are about this. We want to represent you. And so that community buy-in is going to be important. And sometimes you tell your wife, well, I'm willing to have you pay that amount because I've been convinced that it's a good thing, you know? And so we need to hear that from people. And I know we all want to represent the taxpayers, and we want to do what's right by them. So if we're looking for community buy-in, we need to hear from the community. And I would ask people to contact their local supervisors.
That was one of the first things, I mentioned that.
Yes.
As Emily did, but, you know, you got a possible, I think I mentioned it, in the neighborhood, seven hundred dollars for a buy-in, you know, in the county. You know, if you're going to assign that debt to somebody to do this. And that doesn't mean it's a good idea. That's why, though, I like boards to make those decisions. You get more information than the general public. And that's why I don't like to do things by referendum, for instance. You are supplied with the information, all of it, you have to make those tough decisions. One of the questions I'd ask for John, and Supervisor Wagner brought it up before, if, although it really wasn't shown here, but if you were going to really do a phased project, what would those projected increased costs be? You know, again, I'm using round numbers and I'm not going to your slides, but if I built the capacity for two hundred inmates today and needed to add a pod later, is it, is it feasible? And then is it economical?
It's certainly feasible. And in fact, touring Eau Claire would give you a real bricks-and-mortar example of that. Eau Claire is a four-pod design, but the fourth pod was shelled out. So I think if you were talking about a phased construction, my recommendation would be not to, to take a pod off, but to actually shell a pod so that you, at least you've got the construction. I mean, you're not necessarily saving all the money, but tour Eau Claire, and I think you'll see that. And I think that's typical of a number of county jails around the state where they, they build out the entire pod, but then they left portions of it unbuilt.
Like unfinished basement.
Yeah, like an unfinished basement.
And with our current contracts, they have, you know, their county board chairman called me at one time and said, could you please send us some people? We have an unused pod over here, we're struggling financially. So those are questions that need to be answered. Anybody else? Adam, you're kind of behind me here, so I don't really see your handle of it. Sheriff's Department? No?
Could we give this email to us later on?
We're going to update it.
After it's updated.
After it's updated, yeah.
Yeah, after it's updated, they'll send me the PowerPoint, I'll convert it to PDF and put it in your documents for reference.
Thanks.
And that will be available to the public as well, or just county board?
I can, I'll figure it out.
Okay. And, and talk about the feasibility of making it, because it's like Lance says, we have much more information. Is the public going to be confused by looking at this document? Maybe not after they watch this.
Well, hopefully get some insight there, and you get buy-in, it's nice. You don't always get buy-in, sometimes you have to make those tough decisions. But you have the information in front of you. Is there anything else that needs to come before us today? With nothing to come for us today, Mike, I'd ask your committee to continue in that way. I'd ask the other committees to at least address this in some way on their agendas. Ed, I know you will, operations for sure. Al Bry, Al, if you can hear me, your property committee, obviously, integral to this whole process. Judicial legislative, probably, because we deal with the judges and the others. Is that what you're raising your hand for, Bill?
Yeah, I'll tell, I'll tell them that.
Okay, and then Jake, not to be left out, you know, talking about it. All right, nothing else?
Avon.
All right, I guess with, with nothing else to come before us, then I will declare this meeting adjourned.